Is relevant. If we think about selling this property, the first thing I need to have is access to the property. So you're suggesting that this is something that should happen later in the process? How can I even sell it if I don't have access to my own property? You know, if we look at this logically, the first step that needs to happen is I need to get permission from the city. I don't care if it's an easement or, you know, some other form of right across that property, which two people already crossed with no formal rights, but I need to put that in place to make this property self. The second thing I need is the utility, even from 1022, to get utilities up to this property. I've secured that easement from Laternal and that is being filed with three quarters of the CUP. Which leads me to the next step, approve the variance for the driveway of over 500 feet, approve the conditional use permit, and then all the other things that the city is requesting as a provision of the building permit. So the city is requesting is a drainage plan, stormwater sewer prevention plan, and a grading plan. So I reached out to WSB in Rochester and got a quote from them for the costs on doing those activities. Those costs are about $12,500. Who is going to go engage an engineering firm to do that work prior to even knowing whether they can build a house on that property? First, you've got to approve the variance for the driveway and approve the conditional use permit before somebody's going to make that investment. I see that your logic is flawed, you're going backwards and saying you want these people to invest $12,000 before they can even know whether they can buy a house. And then now we don't even know if we can access it if we don't have, you know, a way to get there. So I don't see how the city can take the position of saying that these other two people can cross this property with nothing in place, yet I can't cross that property to get the money back.
Attorney Rigs, can you kind of answer that question?
Yeah, and that's the exact point. I don't know who's crossing or not crossing, and that's the whole aspect of the title that you would look at for future planning to look at this. It isn't something you grant an easement to somebody and not have in place your sound engineer on how it's going to be accessed for utilities and to make certain we have what can be granted or not granted. So it isn't flawed logic, it's what the city code requires for moving forward here.
So according to...
Can I finish please?
Sure.
And what is necessary for the city to do that is to have a sound plan in place with a depiction showing how this is going to happen, how utilities are going to access to it, and how the right-of-way would access, and how it would work for any future development as well. Because typically when the city puts in a road, what the subdivision code requires, no different than what you're talking about and Joe and Derek just referenced with the business park, you put in a road with the idea of where it's going to go in the future and how that's going to work out. That's what's occurring here. What are you going to do with Gates? Where is it going to go? Is it going to go straight? Is it going to veer off? Or how would you handle that? You've got to have a plan in place and somebody's got to come put that together. It isn't just these two properties you're dealing with, it's everything in that area and how it interacts. And that's what, again, that's what the city's code requires as you do when you're extending that subdivision like this.
So, you know, we're not asking you to extend Gates, that's not what we're asking. We're asking for easement across a piece of city property. According to CTI's attorneys, the right-of-way goes all the way to the end of my property. Now, that's a difference between what Mark says and maybe what you say, but their attorneys say they don't need an easement from the city because the right-of-way goes all the way to the end of that property. So, I mean, do we have to go and have a legal battle of where the right-of-way is established then?
Yes, they're wrong. That's just how it is. I mean, that street right-of-way and...
So instead of going there, simply asking for the same...
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know how their attorneys of review talk to, can look at this seriously and go on a county GIS map, it'll take about two minutes, and sit there and say that there is right-of-way? There is not right-of-way. That parcel that goes north of Gates Avenue is part of like 40, 30 or 40 acres, it's part of the wastewater plant. That is not right-of-way, and I know their little, their easement shows ROW on there, that's just flat out wrong. It's not right-of-way, it's not, I mean, anybody could see, when you click on that, it says City of Kenyon, and you could see it's part of a bigger parcel. That doesn't change the question of, you know, trying to establish an easement through there, but it does, I mean, it does, it does change the question of who owns it and what it is, but what it, and what you're crossing there isn't highway or road right-of-way, it's property, City of Kenyon, and it's part of the wastewater parcel. The other thing is the condition use permit and the variance discussion are going to come up in a little bit here on the agenda, so I don't think we're going to talk about that at this moment. But I think that this question is going to be dependent on, you know, what happens with those two items.
So what if they don't buy it? Well, I'm still left not being able to get to my property? I don't see how you can put that ahead of this. I want access to my property regardless of what happens with that sale.
Well, there's an access that has been, I don't know what you call it, has been used through time that goes into the CTI, former CTI property that is adjacent to your other property. So you can go in that way and then get up to that other property. Is that the best long-term thing? No.
Well, unfortunately, Gates Avenue still ends short of that driveway.
Yes.
It ends short of Mrs. Marion's driveway. So are you going to tell me you're not going to let Mrs. Marion or Mr. Ghul go home tonight and cross that property?
No, nobody's saying that. But there does need to be a long-term, you know, this needs to be addressed long-term for all those properties. But again, that's a separate issue than the CUP and the variance that are coming up. I mean, they're two different things. Because like you said, you for some reason kept that property, you still want a permanent access or a different type of way to get in there. So that needs to be addressed, but there's some questions that have to be addressed that the city, that the city has to, you know, and the attorney has to contemplate, look at, what is the best way to deal with that? Because we have a paved driveway coming through there. We have, like you said...
And that's on my, that's on my property, so I give him access, right? That doesn't let him reuse my access. Mr. Ghul's driveway runs on the eastern 33 feet of my property. That's an easement that now I have, right? He has the right to use that, but that doesn't allow him not to let me use that. I have as much right to use that as he does. It's not, he doesn't own the land, he has an easement from it.
Yeah, so there, but sitting here tonight, we don't have the answer to that. We don't have the answer to what the best way to deal with this is, because this is one of those things that's been going on for years, and I guess nobody realized that, you know, that they were crossing city property. And it's not that the end-all is to say no one should cross city property, and I hope you're not conveying that because that's not what we're saying, but the end-all is to try to come up with the best way long-term to reduce liability to the city and all the taxpayers and come up with a permanent mechanism to allow access. But that's a different question than the next two items that are coming on the agenda.
Correct, right, and they're separate issues. But again, how can I ever sell the property if I don't even have access to it, right? So that's got to be the first thing that's resolved, is how do I get access to my property? What is the, how is the city suggesting that I get access to my property when two people are already using that? And they're going to deny me access? I don't...
I'll jump in there. I'm not sure how you ended up with a parcel of land that doesn't have access, because that would have, if it was subdivided, that had to go through the council, but apparently it did not, and that must have got filed with record.
It would have been back there if you get your...
Yeah, I don't think so, not without access.
That's why we get back to that property.
Yeah. What do you think went through the council?
With the lot combination.
When we split that parcel off.
That's how we got back there, that's how we got access.
When you split the property that Laternal's currently owning?
Yeah, so I split a parcel of that five acres off and that went with the house because it was very close to the, it was very close to the back of the house.
Okay, so that was, say that was split off, but the, that doesn't answer the question of the access coming in from the east?
Right. No, and it wasn't supposed to be a big deal because somebody was supposed to buy it, but you know, after they figured out the landlock, they decided that, you know, they can enjoy it not being used for anything without them to pay for.
So when that was approved, that created a landlocked parcel land, which AKA is a fly plot. And that's not, I mean, that's what we're dealing with right now. So that doesn't automatically, I mean, that's a different question than this Gates Avenue road access. You have an access, the part across the city isn't resolved yet, but that access into the CTI tower property and then that connects up to the other property is there right now, and you're still going to use that access.
So, so but where that CTI tower access comes in is past the end of Gates Avenue?
Right, and a permanent kind of mechanism needs to be approved, I mean, for Mr. Ghul's property and for your two parcels there. We understand that, we, I think the big thing tonight is we don't have that figured out yet. We don't have the best way to go with that, but that doesn't mean you're not going to access that property, but that also isn't a perfect situation, because if something happens on that city property, you know, that's kind of what concerns me, and I doubt it will, cars coming and going and driving, but that's a reality of it. When something happens on your property, you know, you don't want to be, you know, want something to happen on your property when it's someone else that is accessing it to reach another property, just like the city and the taxpayers don't. So we're trying to figure out, the city attorney's trying to figure out, a permanent solution for the existing people that are accessing that right now. But that doesn't change the planning commission, the land use question that's coming after this, that's a separate issue. So depending on what happens with that, this still, right, has to be addressed, but it's just not going to probably be addressed tonight though.
So what do we need to put in place to get this in?
Well, we're working on it, I mean...
You mean, you've known about this for six months? How much longer is it going to take to figure it out?
We haven't, at this point, we've had the land use application since October, not for six months, and before that, we weren't requested. But what the land use applications did was all of a sudden bring out obviously a problem. So to say that we've had that for six months is not correct. We have not been asked to address that for maybe a month now, we've been looking at that situation, so.
So Scott, what you're saying is you need to figure out a legal way to, where that we can get access to all three of these people, and then if that's done, or when that's done, then the easement is a moot point, because you would, we'd have a solution.
Yeah, likely, and that's the point, is that you would be extending a right-of-way around and worrying about an easement.
Yeah.
Yep, exactly.
But part of this is dependent on if the, you know, variance request, depending on what happens with that, because that's going to take this whole thing further up north. And so we're going to be looking at a different, or a different legal, you know, description. And if that doesn't, then the legal description is going to be depending on, you know, where the Ghul property, I mean, it's almost going to have to be surveyed, and there's costs involved with this that frankly are not, I don't think should be, you know, paid for by the city, because they're part of people that are using that. So there's questions that need to be answered that are going to cost money, and...
Yeah, and as I said, the things that are missing is actually updating title work for each of the parcels, particularly the city's parcel, but then a survey, the engineers look at and say, this is where the right-of-way desk goes. That is the issues that are outstanding right now. And that survey shows, at least to, as Mark says, whether you go and how far you go depends on what you're trying to accomplish, or what you're trying to accomplish going through around and any of the lands that are there and connect with anything else. You typically don't get in roads either, they just stop, or you've got to have a turnaround, cul-de-sac, something else there for emergency vehicles. That's why we don't open roads until they're adequate for police, fire, ambulances, things like that.
Anything else yet, say? Anybody else?
So this road has never been adequate, correct?
Will you speak up please?
So this road that you just said has never been adequate, correct? Is that what you just said?
No.
I didn't hear that.
Because you said the, um...
Which road are you speaking on?
Gates Avenue. Where it just dead ends, you said?
It doesn't exist. It, Gates ends at a point, doesn't go any further to the north.
Right, it is such, which is not adequate.
I didn't say that, but it doesn't exist.
You said it needs to turn around or something.
What I'm saying is typically when we establish right-of-way, a certain distance pursuant to the code, and any dead ends of that have to have a cul-de-sac or some other availability for turnarounds and things like that, that's how the roads are set up, yeah.
Otherwise they're inadequate.
Unless it connects to something else, which it could, and it could plan to be connected to a lot of things, I suppose. But that's why you align your engineers to say where it goes and how utilities will be within that right-of-way.
The road exists, and you said it needs a turnaround or something for all the emergency vehicles to be adequate, and you said it was inadequate, so it's always...
I didn't say it was inadequate, but I said it's, there isn't a road there, we don't have right-of-way there right now. Mark said, it's city property, that's what it is. If people are driving over it, that's, that's one thing, but it's city property.
Gates Avenue does go up so far with no turnaround, it just stops.
Right, and it wasn't servicing anything else from there, and shouldn't have been servicing anything else, that's correct.
The only thing it services is a public works building, you know, the Marion property comes off there, and then Mr. Ghul and their property comes off there. So right now, the way that's configured, if it only serves those, and then very infrequent property, you know, traffic that went into that tower property, that has served that adequately. I think what the reference to not serving adequately was if it's developed further, and I'm not even necessarily saying one house more, but just if that's developed more in the future, I think Scott's making reference that, that, you know, we need to look at a more comprehensive solution. But as that thing sits right now, no, it's served those two or three properties.
I was, I was just trying to clarify, because I didn't hear.
Okay.
I wasn't trying to start a fight.
Well, essentially, the right-of-way of Gates Avenue now ends, it abuts the property on the city property where the public workshop is located. So right now, the road itself is, it's a standard road, it's a serviceable road. Where it terminates right now is you can access the public workshop from the end of the road. So the road can function to serve those properties that immediately access that road, and also the public workshop that sits at the end of the road. And I think with the attorney administrator getting in, if, if the public road were to extend further, we would need to be sure it was designed to meet city code standards, so that if it goes beyond the public workshop, then it wouldn't need to have some type of turnaround, because now it doesn't terminate at the public workshop anymore, it's terminating at a different point. So we'd have to make sure that that portion would be designed properly, would have all the code requirements met, and needs to be properly thought through before it would be put in place.
If you look at the map, there's the bottom blue line, right? So the green starts at about the middle of the city shop, and we need to get to the bottom of that blue line. So you're talking about, you know, 100 feet to access my property, you know, it's not very far, and it is adequate for, for access today. And we're talking about adding one more house. We're not talking about putting a development back there, we're not talking about the need for a cul-de-sac, we're talking about letting me use 100 feet to veer off to the left to get onto that property. I don't understand why, why this is being turned into a scientific issue.
And that whole property, those properties, been there long before the city shops.
Part of this problem though is if you fudge on this, then you start fudging on this here and you start moving around, we have to have a guideline, and I'm going to ask this here. When you say the road needs to be extended or a turnaround of some sort, does that need to be implemented and put into place prior, or can this just be on paper? Or how do we go? Because we're looking at a considerable expense for the city as to what we're going to deal with it.
I mean, pursuant to our city code, the answer is yes, it is supposed to be in place. That's what our subdivision regulations require.
And we have nothing in our budget for that whatsoever. No street improvement on that part?
No, I mean, there's no plan to do that.
Okay. Do we have to go any further on this? Any other discussion?
I, I think the basic point is that the issue hasn't been raised, and this is a valid issue. But it's just the city isn't able to just say, oh, we'll put an easement there and that'll solve the issue. I think the easement is one idea, but I think the city has to do its due diligence to research, and now that this issue's been identified and brought up, it's, the research's got to be done, the options have to be identified and vetted, so that the best solution is implemented, rather than the first solution that's, that comes to mind.
So we move on? Okay. We go to old business then? Which is resolution 2019 dash 32, designating an annual voting place. And I know it's been brought up, city hall, fire department, or I mean, city hall and the fire hall. So that was left from last month, so we need to decide as to where we're going to have our voting place at.
So at the October meeting, the council directed staff to review the fire hall as a possible site for the 2020 election. So public works director, Eric and I viewed the fire hall site, including the meeting room and parking. The meeting room in the fire hall would be larger than the council room, it would provide better layout with more space for voting booths and election judges. There would also be an, there would also be a lot more like onsite direct parking. There would be some adjustments from a staff level that myself and the deputy clerk were present on-site if the elections were held at the fire hall. The main advantage to this room is the current site is the proximity of the city offices and location downtown, but it is smaller and there's no onsite parking. So the fire hall would offer some material advantages, but either site, as we said two years ago, could, either site would work for the election, so.
Well, I just, you know, we had the pretty small election here a week ago, and it just reinforced my belief that we need a better building with more accessible parking. There just, there is one makeshift handicap spot that was kind of set up out there. You get three people going to subway and two people going across to the chay-chays, and your street is full, and you're, you know, you're pushing people away where it's harder to vote, and I don't think we should make it harder to vote, I think we should make it easier, and I think the layout of the fire hall just allows for that. So that, I, that's what I'm thinking, is it's just, next year, it's going to be a big election, you know, it's a presidential election, and I think it just makes sense to, to put it in a spot where it has its own designation, with lots of parking, flat surfaces, and a lot of room inside for people, especially people who have disabilities can move around fairly easily, so that's, that's where I'm leaning.
Well, I had a mountain, you know, to ask people, how when I thought about this, where do you prefer to go for voting? And the majority of them did say the fire hall. So any other discussion on it? Need a motion one way or the other?
I'll move that we establish the Kenyon Fire Hall as the polling place for 2020.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Pass this. Kenyon Fire Hall. Mark, do you need to change this resolution then?
Yeah, we'll change it. I mean, right, the resolution will say fire hall.
So they're all covered then?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's motion was supposed to be presented, yeah, this is, 2019-32.
Okay. Next one is new business, and what we got on that is resolution 2019 dash 33, and that has to do with adoption assessment for the late footed utility deals. Need a motion on that? I move we adopt resolution number 2019 dash 33. I second that. Motion been made, second. Do all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, ayes passed. Okay, going on to item number two, the conditional use permit application for Jody and Melissa Kuzey to construct a new home on a fly lot in a zoning district, parcel number 66 dash 640 dash 0190.
So Jody and Melissa Kuzey are seeking approval of a conditional use permit to construct a new home on a fly lot in the ex zoning district. The planning commission held a public hearing on October 29th, and basically they, you have the, the main concerns that were brought up, were drainage from the site, access of utilities, and the 50-foot rear setback. The planning commission recommended that the city council deny the application at this time. You have a revised, or resolution, the correct resolution, that talks about the specific reasons that the planning commission recommended. And if you look at the findings on the, starting on the first page and on the second page, they talk about, again, issues related to providing a drainage plan that would be reviewed by the city engineer, and also providing a plan for utilities where they're going to be accessed for easements. And they felt that there was, these issues were such that they warranted, of course we have the 60-day rule that it has to be, you know, addressed within 60 days or approved. So it's fairly common that issues, you know, condition use permits are turned down if there's questions that come up or more formations needed and the applicants reapply. So I'm not going to go through every one of those findings, but there's also obviously other information in the packet. The engineer also reviewed this, and kind of came to the same conclusion that really further information needs to be addressed. There was residents that came to the public hearing that addressed, or that had raised concerns with, you know, runoff from the site. So there's also been, on our part, you know, trying to discuss the utilities, so finding or having a plan for the utilities is also a big part of this. And then the third part, of course, is the road access. And so the road access is covered more in the variance, but it's obviously tied to the CUP. So anyway, those were the recommendations that came from the planning commission meeting. I don't know if there's any other questions, or now it's, can you add anything to...
Can I comment?
Yes, sir.
So, right, I mentioned I approached WSB out of Rochester to give me a proposal for a grading and drainage plan. The price that they quoted me was $12,410. I don't have an issue with the city requesting this of a buyer, however, I think requesting that of a buyer before they have the permit, before they know whether you're going to allow them to build a house is unreasonable. I think approving the conditional use permit and then making this a requirement of a building permit, that's a reasonable approach, but to suggest that somebody spend $12,000 and then have you tell them they can't build a house there, I believe that to be unreasonable. So first, I would suggest that you pass the conditional use permit, and then as a requirement of the building permit, require your grading and grading plan.
First of all, we haven't any information outside of what you said. You presented nothing to us in paperwork or our engineer to look at, or anything of the sort. So we're, we're taking your word against ours, but we're also looking at what is best for the community itself, and especially the area around our landowners as to what is going on. And that, and this is the reason why, that they have looked, the planning commission has looked at it from various different stages. These are the hoops that they're telling you, you must jump through to get this permit. You know, it's like going out and buying a car, if you don't have the money, you can finance it, but you still have to have good financing. This is the thing that we're not seeing, is your actual paperwork of laying it out, this is what the wetlands go, this is the flow that it's going to be. I think you did mention that you had the right or was getting the right for your water service. Have you contacted the county yet to see if they can even open up County Road 12 to put a water in? Have you went about your sanitary sewer and rest? You're asking us to go forward with something that we do not... You're asking us to go forward with something that we do not know, and we have to be responsible to the rest of the people in this community.
Oh, yes, the easements have been secured for, the easements have been secured for access to sanitary water.
I didn't understand you at all.
The easements have been secured for the utilities.
Where have we got that?
It was being filed with the county. I just got it signed yesterday.
Yeah, and this is the first I've heard of this. But as far as the drainage goes, the property where the house would be, where they're proposing to put the house, there's been concerns raised by residents during the hearing process, and residents have contacted us with questions about drainage off of the site because the area to the south of there is a waterway and is wet, and they've had issues with, you know, and of course, we've had a lot of excessive rain the last few years, so we don't wanna necessarily judge it by, you know, years where we've broken records for the most rain. But there's been a lot of concern with that, and a good portion of the north west part of that property is in the five-hundred-year flood fringe. So, there's two pretty major things that a lot of properties don't have dealing with water that have raised, you know, questions. And I don't think that it's unreasonable, you know, to request or to require, you know, a, and this was also, the site was reviewed by the city engineer, and that's where a lot of this came from, was they think that there should be more information provided. So, because of where that sits, that's what has led to the engineers reviewing it and then ultimately the requesting more information. And it's of such a nature that it's not really just a simple, you know, provide us more information, we'll make a contingent. Because obviously, when you look at a situation like this, it's a question of viability. Is it viable to build on that site or not? That's what the engineers have expressed to us, and they don't express it saying they don't think it is, they're expressing it saying that we need more information. But it's more than just a simple, you know, well, we need to control runoff from the equivalent of one three-thousand-square-foot foundation or whatever it is. It's beyond that because of the two items I just talked about with that site. So, that's what led to that. And the utility access is a, is a very big question because it's a long ways to get utilities to that property. It's gonna cost, you know, we have no, I don't wanna say official estimate, but in looking, you know, the, Joe and Derek looking at it, you know, they came up with just off the cuff maybe forty thousand dollars to get utilities to that site. So, I mean, it's a, it's a lot of money. I mean, it's, and again, this is not normal of a five-acre site, but it's the reality of it, and this doesn't even include cutting into, if you went south to County Road Twelve, Second Street, the cost of that. So, I mean, it's a major, major cost and, you know, a major effort to get utilities up to that site. So, asking for the plans and more information is not, you know, unreasonable. And the planning commission felt at this time there was just too many questions to recommend approval of it. That's it, so...
Well, if I can offer a couple of comments as well, and the city attorney could probably express his experience as well. You know, working with municipalities, I understand your perspective, where you say you've got a piece of property and you'd like to know you can do this before you invest the money to do the plans, but you have to understand from the city's perspective, this is not a piece of property that's already set and approved for the use that you're proposing. That's why it requires a conditional use permit. Part of the conditional use permit is that the burden is on the property owner to show that they can meet the conditions in order to use the property in the new way that they're proposing to use it. And it's very common for the property owner to have to invest money upfront to do that investigation, to gather the information and put the plans together, to present to the city to show that they are able to meet the conditions before the city grants approval. This, it would be, from the city's perspective, it's backwards to grant approval, to say, yes, we approve you to use this property until the city knows that you're actually able to use it in the way you want to. You know, if something were to come up in the investigation that precluded you from using, you have a big wetland in there, you have some other kind of, you know, utilities aren't viable to get to the site, then the city would not want to grant that approval. So, for the city to approve it before they have the information is putting the cart before the horse from the city's perspective. And it's not uncommon for property owners to have to invest this, and we've seen other things where people will buy pieces of land that, oftentimes, it's larger developers where they'll come in, investigate visibility, they'll find out it's not feasible, and they'll walk away from the property, or they'll change their plan of what they wanna do with it. So, it, the investment you're gonna make in the property, if you go forward with installing utilities, building the driveway access, building the structure itself, is gonna greatly exceed the twelve thousand dollars that would be the upfront investigation to do the preliminary work to identify the conditions and to see if you can meet them. So, it is, it is a lot of money out of pocket for an individual home, individual property owner to have to outlay, the twelve thousand five hundred dollars. But it is a fraction of the overall investment that would need to be made into that property to make it usable for the, for the land use that's being proposed. And from the city's perspective, that is the proper process, and it is the expected, the responsibility of the property owner to make that initial investment to provide the information to show it can meet the conditions before the city then makes the conditional approval. That's, that's the whole purpose of a conditional use permit, is to show that you can meet those conditions in order for the use that you're proposing.
Can I ask a question? We have the Goodyear County Soil and Water Service, and we've got many engineers on staff at that service. Is there some reason that advice or input on drainage from them wouldn't be able to be used in this versus spending the twelve thousand dollars?
Well, the advice could certainly be asked of them, but they're not, their role is not to serve as a design engineer or that type, they don't provide that type of service for individual property owners.
But if they felt that if their thoughts were that it, that they don't see imminent drainage issues...
That would not be sufficient for the city's review purposes. No.
Even though they're all very...
They would have to prepare, they would have to prepare a plan and certify it with their license, you're saying that they had done that level of engineering to achieve that conclusion. I mean, the general advice or general review is one thing, but the detailed level of analysis that would be needed for them to certify based on their license that we investigated this and we are saying with the backing of our certification license behind it, that we submit this plan. They wouldn't go to that level in just a general review, and if they just submitted a general review, that wouldn't be sufficient for the city to accept.
It does seem a little odd that on, we're talking eight-acre parcel. I can understand if it's a traditional city lot, seventy-five by one-fifty, and they're putting a home on that, or a large garage. But when we're talking eight acres and we're talking one home, it's hard for me to see that that's gonna cause a huge disruption in the drainage in that area. I mean, just from an outstanding, non-expert opinion, it seems a little odd.
It is significantly different, but it is significantly different in a, in a, a single-family lot that's been developed as part of a larger development that's been designed and geared for use as a single-family residence. You're not talking about taking a larger piece of property that was not originally intended for a single-family resident and using it for a single-family residence. And if the city approves that, that single-family residence is liable to be there for fifty years, seventy-five years, a hundred years, and the city's gonna have to deal with, and the neighboring property's gonna have to deal with any issues that are caused by that, that development of that parcel. That's why it is unusual, but it's because it's an unusual situation, which is why it requires the conditional use permit. It's not, in the code, if something is platted for a certain use and the use proposed is consistent with that, it can be developed without having to go through the conditional use permit process. But in this instance, you've got a piece of property that is not a standard, single-family residential lot, it's not zoned for that, it's not originally proposed for that. So, now to convert it into that use requires it to go through a conditional use permit because it's not following what it was originally guided to be. So, it does seem unusual because it is unusual.
And there's, there's high-density residential just to the south of it. If it was out in the country, you know, and it was just large lot or, you know, large egg, then it would be a whole different scenario, but there's high-density residential just south of it. So, that's what precipitates this thought process, this discussion of the impact on the property to the south. If there was vacant land to the south of one house, it'd be different.
And certainly, yeah, you see this in townships that where properties like this will develop, and that is a different situation than if it's in a municipality, where you've got city code and city ordinances and another level of rules that you have to follow. If you're out in a township and it's not sewer and wa, it's not city sewer and water, it's not, a lot of those requirements are gonna be different. So, this is a, different than if this piece of property was out in a township rather than within the city limits of Kenyon.
Attorney, you ready to say anything to say?
No, I think Joe covered it, Mark covered it for the most part, but I mean, the reality is, this property would be easier to develop if you were coming in right now and subdividing it and putting a road in and going through and following what the code says, because you almost have to do all those same steps to get this to the point where it's developable at this point. That's the reality. That's what Joe was describing, to get right-of-way there, to get utilities there, to make sure drainage is proper, all those are requirements of the code.
So, this is a single lot subdivision?
And this is a single lot subdivision. That's a good way to put it. You're following all the same things for one lot rather than saying it's developed for four lots or whatever community needs support with.
Okay, well, we have a resolution, twenty nineteen dash thirty-four concerning, resolution concerning conditional use permit application for Jody and Melissa Kuzey to construct a new home on a flag lot. Council is up to us to decide what we're gonna do with this. So, just so I'm clear, by approving this resolution, we're approving the denial, right?
Correct. I motion we approve the resolution for the denial of twenty nineteen dash thirty-four.
Okay, there's been a motion made for denial of the resolution, twenty nineteen dash thirty-four. I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye's passed. Denial. Okay, that one's all right. Okay, we got the next one here is, let's see. Appeal for denial, let's see, resolution twenty nine thirty-four, sorry, appeal of planning commission. Thirty-five. Does it run on the five-hundred-foot?
Yeah, C.
Okay, C. Yeah, appeal of the planning commission denial of variance application from Jody and Melissa Kuzey seeking approval to construct a driveway in excess of five-hundred feet limit to a new home as listed in the egg zoning district on a flag lot according to section five-ten dash one-one of the Kenyon City Code. And again, basically, that's the same thing.
And Mark, you've got, this is a situation where this was denied by the planning commission.
Yeah.
And it's not before the council on appeal that they requested this be reviewed again.
Yes.
Reality is, you have a resolution before you, and you have two resolutions, but one that recommends denial, which is somewhat obvious at this point in time since the CUP has been denied. The other findings in there that have been provided by city staff are that, and this is the standard that's required, there's no practical difficulty that's been established by the applicant, and that's what state statute requires in the situation of the variance. To grant it, there has to be what the legislature says a practical difficulty. In this case, that's not evident from what you have because of the reality is, you don't have enough information to even make that decision to get to the point where it says, okay, we should grant the variance for this, you know, excess length of drive to get there. You don't have all the estimate engineered, you haven't gone through, you don't have the right-of-way established. A number of those factors are there that it doesn't support granting of the variance at this point in time, and that's what the planning commission found, and that's what staff recommendation is at this point in time as well.
Okay. So, anybody else have any questions on that?
I can explain that further if you'd like, but I mean, that's the reality of what you have, and the bottom line is, is when the CUP is denied, there is no need for the variance at this point in time.
Yeah. That's why it was all broke down, being one of these, okay. Anything else, counsel, that you'd like to ask, what you've got? There is a motion on, or we need a motion to either accept or deny Resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-five. So, move.
Second.
Second. Motion been made in second on Resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-five for denial. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, move on. Twenty, twenty, propose agreement for continuation of our city joint powers, joint powers agreement with the state building code administration.
So, the city, for many years, contracted with Goodyear County Land Use to conduct residential commercial building inspections, and so this is just renewal of the annual contract for them to conduct that.
Okay. Any questions on that? And everything's been working fine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been, Dan's been our main guy. He lives in Long Migo, and he's done a great job, so, no, I think, probably, we're pretty happy with him.
You've had essentially the same contract before you came over here.
Yeah.
So, that's just a case of continuing...
Yeah, that's pretty good.
Now, we continue to see, see county joint powers agreement for state building administration to do the...
I'll second it.
There's a motion been made in second. Do you have an agreement with the city-county joint powers agreement? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye's passed. We got the next one here, Rose Fest budget request, Terry Malloy.
Good evening. I am back again to talk to council about Rose Fest and funding. I was here on behalf of the Rose Fest committee, of which I've been apart from the last year. Earlier in the year, because we were, we were running up against a fund shortage wall and really wanted to provide more community need, put more activities to do with Rose Fest, and see that we've had some generous donations from some of our engineering and attorneys, companies, and as well the snow drifters have been really generous in their donations, but I guess what it comes back around to is, we had typically donated a thousand dollars for its Rose Fest, which was enough to cover the portability expenses. The committee would ask that the city consider a two-thousand-dollar donation so that we could continue to grow the activities. We added a petting zoo this year, which cost just under a thousand dollars, but added quite a bit of enjoyment for families and people in the communities. Any questions, any thoughts, concerns?
Do you have a dollar amount you're asking for?
What the, what the people on the committee talked about was an amount of two thousand dollars.
Okay. So, this year, in the past, the city donated a thousand dollars toward the Rose Fest committee. There's other, obviously, there's other things that the city pays for, supports, you know, different areas with Rose Fest, but last year, that was two thousand dollars, I believe, is what was in, or put in the budget for, I think, Rose Fest had asked for three thousand. I think we ended up coming back with two thousand, and then, you know, we got some additional donations from, especially from Bolton and Meg, which we applied to the portability cost, pretty substantial, so... So, they're asking for two thousand dollars, which is, I believe, I can't say a hundred percent, but I think that's what we put in the budget. We don't have a budget for it, maybe I think that's what we put.
And do we, do we know, is there any talk of doing slade cutter this year, or has that been pretty quiet?
I'm gonna, I've heard no affirmative movement toward... I'm gonna, I have heard no affirmative movement toward that. I think that's one reason that Cobb was really trying to push the Christmas in Kenyon.
Sure.
And Cobb was trying to look at other options for another winter, later winter activity or celebration, or whatever. But right now, yeah, we haven't heard anything about it.
Well, we, we had a thousand in there for them for this year. And.
Yeah.
So there'd be, that could potentially lead to money to it.
Yeah, I'd have to look at that and see. Because I can't recall if we had left that in there or not, but yeah. I mean, a thousand dollars is really not gonna, we could figure that out. So another thousand, we can, yeah, we can figure that out. And I don't think it's unreasonable. I think they've done a great job. We have a good Rose, very good Rose Fest board, and we appreciate you guys.